Economic development background, so I couldn't agree more. We don't want to build just to build and we don't want to just attract folks because we have inexpensive energy. But the projects that we're seeing across the service territories that we serve are actually pretty diverse and very tied to the ag economy, similar to what you're seeing in Seward with dairy processing and with grain processing and pet foods, et cetera. We're seeing a lot of that across our service territory as well. It's not as much of the AI. I think we will see some AI. We're not going to see the large hyperscalers and the language modeling data centers that are gobbling up a lot of energy across the United States right now. We will see a bit of crypto. What we're seeing though, what's interesting in a lot of our service territories, we serve particularly with those public power districts that have a lot of irrigation load. They have significant usage for a few months in the summer and the rest of the year they have very minimal usage. What we're seeing is crypto loads come in that are actually balancing their load profiles out. So they're dropping off their usage during irrigation, which actually will provide some economies of scale and help us from a rate perspective for everybody. So totally understand that concern. Will we continue to see more growth and potentially have to build more? Yes, that's a possibility. We did build into this contract notice provisions for customers. So we'll actually come to customers before we take on a significant build and then ask the customers, is this something that we should move forward with? There is always the possibility that we'd come back and say, hey, would you be interested in an extension of this contract if we were going to build out for more generation? I'm sure Jonathan is hoping that we will continue to ensure that there's additional generation for projects to come to the state, but that would be a decision for all the customers at that time.
Josh, can I make a comment?
Can I ask one before I forget if I don't say I'm a real... I got that from my dad, you know him. On the reserve margin, is that the margin that you have to keep in reserve if there's... Who sets that? Seventeen percent in 2029, who sets that?
Southwest Power. And that's from a reliability perspective. Maybe you guys all remember Winter Storm Yuri. That's really what's driving the Southwest Power and all of the regional transmission organizations across the United States to look at higher reserve margins to make sure that on the coldest days, on the hottest days, there's sufficient headroom and capacity so that it's not destabilizing.
Is everyone in that pool required to have a seventeen percent? So seventeen percent is their standard? That number is not going up as far as you know?
For summer, it's seventeen percent right now. On the winter side of the equation, it's actually higher. However, we're a summer peaking utility, so summer's still what we have to meet. Because even though the winter margin is higher, our loads are less in the winter and our resources actually run better in the winter.
But that percentage has gone up.
Yes.
What was it before?
It was twelve percent previously.
So when you're planning on this increasing the generation capacity, it's not just for the projects that are in the queue, but you also have to bump up your reserve to reflect that. What's the penalty within the pool if you don't hit the reserve?
It's significant.
Like fined?
Yes.
Monetary?
Yeah, a couple, yeah. It's a couple times cost of new entries. So basically they would look at what it would cost to build a combustion turbine and they would charge you two times.
All right, Matt, you're up.
Oh, I want to open up a huge can of worms, but I'm just thinking for future homework, you know, our wholesale partners concentrating on reliability, rate stability, and trying to get as many people signed on the contract in timely manner to do the bond work. I think some of the issue brought up with AI and data farms and, you know, sewer farms and stuff like that, when we do rate studies and we're the retailer, we can maybe treat our existing customers better than someone that wants to come in and might, you know, have that discussion with Jonathan and Courtney about what is the long-term economic development? And if you are just coming in to for a lower rate, maybe on the retail side we could adjust that. So you're gonna have to just pay a little bit more, you know?
I do know that the economic development rate is often available for like new projects.
Not anymore.
But that's not...
No.
Can I finish my sentence? But not anymore.
I heard that.
If I could interject, even the reason for the economic development rate when it was first utilized was because we had excess capacity. And so we had all this overhead for this excess capacity that's sitting there dormant. And so a way to utilize that was to try and leverage the economic development rate to utilize some of that excess capacity. Well, we all know what happened. The excess capacity disappeared and that's nationwide. That's this, this is not some specific complexity or concern of NPPD. This is a nationwide concern in all private and public power providers. We are seeing it across the board. Jonathan is seeing at all the national conventions he goes to. I'm sure NPPD sees it at their conventions when they go meet with their other power providers across the nation. This is an issue all over. Everyone is looking at what their planning is for new power generation across the board. So, but it really is, and speaking to your comments comes in the strike. The same thing, I think the utilization of a lot of the flexibility you're finding is if these communities, as Courtney mentioned before, if they have excess capacity locally, whether it's from their generation or anything else, their irrigation loads, their peaks, their high demands, you know, during certain seasons and then they got this stranded energy capacity. As they're trying to find people to utilize that to even the stuff out. It makes better economic sense. The higher load factor that you can keep at a high rate, I don't want to say it's printing money, but it's pretty close to because it's an efficiency. And that's why it works the best is when you're at that high load factor. If you're gonna ramp up and use hundreds of thousands of kilowatt hours and then you're gonna ramp down for nine months of the year, it's just tons of stranded costs. And so they're trying to fill that. The problem though is some of these data center things, these things have to run all the time because they're processing all the time. And if you know your kids, family members, college kids, whatever, and what they're doing with AI generating data and stuff. I always make the joke, and me and Jonathan have a lot of philosophical discussions about economic development in this sector. I still make the joke that I still think there's AIs arguing with other AIs. They're just using energy all the time, fighting with each other. Or bots on Facebook or something, just sitting there having arguments and regenerating the same time.
Maybe we should ban Call of Duty after eight p.m.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
That's nothing drastic.
A little post in bone there.
You might see a veto pen for the first time.
I have a couple other things that I wanted to add on because this is a great discussion. One, an interruptible rate is a really good tool too for a couple of reasons. One, it allows that additional flexibility so you can kick folks off of the peak, which is what we're trying to do. Because there's a significant peak and that's what we have to plan for from a capacity perspective. If we can keep people off that peak, then we don't have to plan for additional generation. But the other thing with respect to the reserves, I'm glad that you brought this up. Folks on an interruptible rate have a base amount of firm power supply that is taken and the rest of it can be interruptible, hence the name of the rate. We don't have to carry capacity for the interruptible portion of that. So those reserve margins aren't impacted with those interruptible rates. And most of every crypto company, and actually now they have to per state statute, go on an interruptible rate and pretty much a lot of those other very large users are looking at the interruptible rates too. So that it helps from the capacity perspective. And then the second point I wanted to share, the resources that we're building, those rice units and the combustion turbines, we chose them for very specific reasons. One, they're super flexible. We don't have to run them all the time. And as wind drops off in the Southwest Power footprint, we can fire them up very quickly. But two, they're much less expensive than some others to run. So they complement the existing fleet that we have very well. They give us a bunch more capacity so we meet those resource margins, but we don't, we don't have to run them as frequently.
And I'm supportive of our partnership with NPPD. The last time we had this conversation, we think that John and I were the only two people in this room that were there as far as having that discussion. So one of the reasons for, it made it feel like a belabor conversation is just because I won't, we probably won't be here then, I hope we're not here the next time that this comes up. And so, and I...
You're on your own.
So I want to get a lot of this kind of on the record sort of screen so that people who look back on this will, you know, understand some of the issues that we brought up. Not because we're against the agreement, but just because sometimes you have to say the quiet parts loud so that people know looking back, okay, they did think about that. They did talk about that. Because the reality is the conversation twenty or thirty-five or fifteen years from now could be a lot different than the conversation we're having because the needs are that much different. Or the generation and technology is so much more improved or different. You might have a little nuclear reactor outside of Seward by that time, we'll see. Again, not proposing that, just saying it's a possibility. We're not in a queue yet.
That's my question. Can you give us that? I know that's been a topic in the, can you just give us a really high level overview of that?
Yeah, of the next generation nuclear, absolutely. So we've been looking to the future. We're one of only twenty-one utilities in the United States that's licensed to operate a nuclear plant. So that really puts us at an advantage for the next generation of nuclear technologies. And they're coming along. There's, there's still a few years before we really see that commercially and at scale for a couple of reasons. They've got to all get through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission licensing process. But two, it'll be great when they start to get a book of orders and maybe the technologies consolidate a bit so that they can get some economies of scale and the cost come down. Because we're looking at, you know, sixty dollars a megawatt hour. Those, what we've seen so far is like a hundred and twenty dollars a megawatt hour. So eventually they'll come down in cost and be more readily available and have gone through the licensing process. But in the interim, we want to make sure that Nebraska is poised to take advantage of that opportunity because they will be great resources. And nuclear power, it's clean, it is incredibly safe, it's got great fuel security. You mentioned Winter Storm Yuri. Part of the problem with Yuri is the fuel wasn't secure. Either the natural gas pipelines were erupted or down south where plants weren't winterized, their pole piles were frozen. They don't deal with that well like we do up here, let's take the maintainer out on our full pile. With nuclear, you've got fuel in the core for a couple of years. So you don't have to worry about bringing fuel in. So we're in the process right now with the Department of Economic Development at the state level, assessing different sites around the state and then want to bring a couple of those forward and ultimately license them through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission so that when the technologies are available, we can propose moving forward with that in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Just for the record, and we talked about this internally with the council as we kind of discussed the start of this negotiation and getting ready to consider this contract. Another thing that we undertook that NPPD is fully aware of is the municipalities ourselves got together as wholesale customers of NPPD because we understood that the needs of the municipalities operating our own electric utility is different from the needs of these really large public power districts and these rural power districts and some of those other things that are obviously different than the needs and discussions that are going on with retail customers. And so we got together, led by Ryan Hurst from Wahoo. He was our liaison to the contract team. And so he kind of helped represent all the municipalities and our very specific issues and concerns, voicings within those contract negotiations. And then we got together on our own. We did hire, as we've talked about before, our own professional to help navigate and negotiate some of the items and review some of the items that are proposed in the contract. We did that work. NPPD was very open in providing us information, answering questions, meeting with us separately all the way from the top on down to kind of go through that process and kind of look at what became the ultimate red line that we'll consider here in the next month. But kudos to Ryan for kind of taking that on. We met multiple times on our own in our own meetings amongst municipalities, which included, I think some of the kind of the main leaders in that was Central City, North Platte, Wahoo, Seward, and so Lexington, Gothenburg, some of those other ones were at ORG as well. There's numerous other second-class cities and villages, but we're kind of the leading group within the municipalities to kind of undertake that. And so again, unifying our voices and making sure that we're getting a special consideration, not special treatment, but that we have different issues and concerns than maybe some of these larger scale public power districts like Norris and some of them. So, and again, we fully disclose that to NPPD as part of our process, but I think we had our own voice involved in this and that was kind of tailored through Ryan Hurst, the Public Works Director out in Wahoo. So, and former Seward aide.
We really had a great dialogue and we appreciate, you know, this was two years of a lot of work and customers put in a lot of work on this negotiation as well. And I think we came out with a really good contract as a result. So I really, we really appreciate the partnership and that's how we view it. I mean, together we're serving Nebraskans and what we call the public power model and what we really accomplish together. We don't have shareholders. We have customers and we look to you guys when we're making decisions in the best interest of Nebraskans. And I really appreciate the thoughtful questions and dialogue tonight as well and the opportunity to be here.
The last thing I would note is anytime we're working on economic development projects, we're working hand-in-hand with NPPD. Carson, I think has probably been at every single meeting I've ever had over the last eight years plus in regards to those. So they're at the forefront of our economic development projects. They bring projects to us that sometimes they get wind of that don't make it right on our doorstep initially. And then the last one I'd also note is during our August storm event, as also a mutual aid partner, NPPD sent crews to come help assist us in getting our facilities back up and running in a very timely order when we were probably at our most critical. And so we had crews, I think from clear out west, like Scotts Bluff and out there. But it was really part of that partnership. And it's one, again, one of the benefits of being a part of this, of this group is helping each other out. So just things to note, there's a whole lot of other stuff that goes on within this relationship, in this contractual relationship, as it was noted in the presentation. But a lot of time put into this and we'll continue to work at it and go from there.
Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, we appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next to item number two, consideration of the resolution to establish a policy for extension or relocation of electric service.
We'll have Jared come up. I'll kind of throw this to you, but Jared can come on up and he'll kind of go through some of the details, kind of high level. Essentially what this policy is, is the city of Seward had a policy for the extension of electric utilities. These are items that aren't just always thrown to whatever the end-use customer is or the developer. There was a formulaic way that we were doing this. But traditionally in the past, I think the last time we updated these, Jared, ten years ago, 2015, so prior to me. Residential development, we charge a flat four hundred dollars. And in regards to other developments in commercial and industrial loading, it was an odd formulaic situation where you would go look at loads and all this math and then come back and try to recalculate that five years, three years down the line. And that wasn't, that formula wasn't really monitored well over the lifetime of this. And so it was kind of like a, and with turnover, it's hard to do it at host versus doing it more upfront. And the other thing that we asked in going back and looking at this, and Jared will talk about that, is we looked at what are other public power partners doing? What are the municipalities doing? What is NPPD doing and things like that? And we saw that the model had definitely changed out in the market. And so we were like, we need to review this because we have a number of developments coming online and things like that. And we are putting significant funds into extension of utilities and not probably recuperating what we would normally have seen. And so we felt like we needed to go back through and do a rehaul of this, looking through kind of these updated parameters and policies. So that was, that was the impetus of doing this, kind of getting ahead of, we're going to continue to see growth and development, both in the commercial and residential side. We need to have a plan that actually meets in the middle in regards to it. So, Jared?
All right, so the purpose of the extension of policy is to establish general conditions under which the city of Seward make extensions or additions of electrical facilities and general guidelines to be followed and determined by the customer contribution. So first I'll go over some definitions. Extraordinary costs. These costs are, aren't abnormal construction costs like tree clearing, stuff removing, regarding existing utilities, government permits or land acquisition, right of ways. Betterment costs, betterment costs are system upgrades the city shows to do now to the preparation for the future growth, like, you know, oversized transformers, upgrade wire size for high impacities for future loads, which we pay by the city. And then we have contribution in aid of construction. This is the customer's shared cost, which is non-refundable. And the formula is we take the total costs, project costs minus the city's law of investment minus the system betterment cost equals the customer's contribution cost. So some examples of those contribution costs for home business, the city will pay fifty percent of the AIL and the customer pays fifty percent of the AIL plus extraordinary costs. For seasonal services, the city pays twenty percent of the ALI and the customer pays seventy-five percent of the ALI plus extraordinary costs. For temporary additions, less than twenty feet, the city will pay a hundred percent of the ALI and the customer pays extraordinary cost only. For temporaries over twenty foot, the city pays zero percent. The customer pays a hundred percent of the ALI plus extraordinary costs. And for lines needed to feed new subdivisions or new facilities to the property line, the city pays zero percent plus all betterment costs. The customer pays a hundred percent of the ALI plus extraordinary costs. Inside the subdivision boundary, the city pays fifty percent of the ALI plus betterment costs and the customer pays fifty percent of the ALI plus extraordinary costs. And if we have to relocate existing lines for customer projects, they'll pay a hundred percent of relocation cost. And for projects adding a two-point-five MVA or more, the city may require you to sign a five-year contract with a monthly minimum facility charge for art extension security agreement, which are the highlights of the new policy. Questions?
Any questions or comments from the council?
It's a lot, I know that. Again, we included in there, we modeled ours and kudos to Jared and Derek. They did a lot of the heavy lifting. And then I just kind of kept in the background and reshored up some things that made sense to the way we were making the math math, we'll say. But we really modeled after that Beatrice and NPPD policy. We felt they're very similar. It balances out both, we're taking risk, but also the people that are coming in to do their projects are taking a bit of risk. And also if the, we'll say the load doesn't materialize, it moves that from being on our backs to more on their back. That if they're coming in saying, hey, we're gonna do twenty megawatts of electricity and then they come in and they generate, they only utilize two, all that excess stranded capacity and all that overhead, now that's not lost on us anymore. Not that we've had a major issue with it, but just charging a flat rate of four hundred bucks or coming back to do a weird quantification later was not gonna cut it anymore. It is, as you can see with what NPPD is doing, in the situation we're in with critical infrastructure, limited capacity, limited generation, it has to be more of a forward process at the front end rather than a back-end process, so.
I see, but are costs of the people that are benefiting from it versus our ratepayers giving that cost of being at rates?
Lot, lot of subsidy by the other ratepayers.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Or someone like to introduce the resolution?
I want to introduce our resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and it says it has resolution number 2025-30. Would anyone like to know that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Second.
You vote your hand as second, you guys show your votes. Please declare the votes.
Proponent in favor Francis Cow, Taylor Tanyas, Holtermann, Singleton, Strice, and Morgan, seven, zero.
Thank you. Item three, discussion on commercial burn site users. This is from Councilman Singleton.
Yep. The fire chief and I, well, this goes back even prior to him, but this year we've had a lot of fires out to burn sites. So Taylor and I sat down and we talked and he goes, you know, John, I don't care if it's residential, but he said we'll fight fire all day long out there if it's residents taking grass out there. Commercial, we have, we have an issue with. And they're benefiting. And Taylor goes, John, I wish we could just shut down the commercial use to dumping grass out there, which I said I would bring to the council. I support it because right now we got kind of handle on it again. And for the future, you know, you know, your moms and dads, even me, you know, I'm a dad. I'm getting older. I want a place to dump grass in the future and then future generations. So that was our proposal is starting the first of the year, no commercial dumping of grass. They're gonna find another place where they can take it to another landfill, whatever. But we don't need to stockpile it here and they're making money off us. You know, you know, they have grass waste pickup weekly. A commercial site goes around and they come out here and dump it. And it's only what costing, five hundred dollars a year for a keynote for grass dumping?
What's a keynote?
Five hundred. So they're making how much a month? So you figure the cost on that. And so I just wanted to set that out there. The only thing is that we would say is since we share that road with Rumery, that was kind of what we brought to is we would allow him access, but no commercial dumping after the first of the year. Trees, we have no problem with trees, that's easy. It's the grass.
I would even argue in talking with Bob Myers this past week, we are continuing to see a creep on even the tree side because all of a sudden we found out that there's a bunch of side dumps going in there that are going out into the rural areas and commercial jobs and picking up just massive loads of trees and just bringing them in because to take down one tree, you can add five hundred bucks. I mean, if anybody's got a commercial tree taken out lately, one tree by a commercial company, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. Adding five hundred is negligible compared to taking multiple trees a day down, let alone just one tree every day. And so it's, it's a huge subsidy now. And so we're continuing to see, it's just like our discussion of the recycling center. That's how all these people from all the other counties figured out, hey, here's where we can go and save ourselves a ton of money by just doing something very minimal, which is drive into Seward, dump off all of our stuff inside of this building and drive away and not worry about it. That's what the burn site and the compost site is starting to turn into for commercial endeavors. Now, the burn site also is designed to actually be that where the compost site, because it can't be groomed and maintained in the way you would need for something of that size, it becomes a unknown detriment because it self-combust versus the burn site, which we technically, we feel like we have pretty good control on, so.
And I talked to Bob Myers too and they hauled out the excess grass this year. But at least now we got kind of a control on it. It was getting big and getting out of control. And that's why Taylor and I talked and said, we'll fight fire all day long for residents. But commercial, we have an issue with it. So that was our proposal is to stop commercial grass dumping out there. So, that was our proposal, is to stop commercial grass dumping out there, except for Rumory.
The way we did this, that was, this is the discussion point, there's no formal action to be taken tonight. From your discussion, we would generate either a resolution or a policy, or change code or whatever it would be, but having this discussion, it gives us a direction to create something that is a tangible policy to bring forward for a formal action, so.
That's for John's.
I support it too, like, yeah, makes complete sense.
Question, I mean, will we run into any issue giving preferential treatment to one commercial user?
He owns the road.
He owns the road, but does he own the compost pile?
No, but he utilized, it's just, we must say, he owns part of that, so we wanted not to take that away, cause negativity.
I mean.
It's kind of a win-win.
Yeah.
I think with Rumory, you can make a separate contractual, there is a give and take there. I don't know that there's all the easements and stuff with how we get back there. Kelly could go through more legal aspects of that, but there's probably some give and take with him being a mutual user and us having to drive across his property.
It's easier to do.
He also takes the, he also bears a burden that other people don't, which is, his property is directly next to this.
But he benefits too, because he gets all the attention, everybody drives by, and they might buy something.
They wave, yeah.
So that's our proposal, like I said, as fire department, we'll fight that, all day long, we'll fight residents, but commercials, they're making a killing.
It's grass and leaves.
Yeah, grass, leaves, it's all resident.
That is, but that's what.
Garden, leaves, everything.
Well, you said grass earlier, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's everything. Garden, anything that's residence, we have no issue, we'll fight it all day long, but commercial, we have an issue with that.
When you, when you get a key, do you sign anything on the side?
Yes.
Is there any type of notice that we have to give them?
We would update our rules and regs, but again, the other one is, we don't monitor it a whole lot other than Saturday morning, when we have it open to the public. And so, if somebody for tree purposes gets a key in their commercial, and then all of a sudden they're in there dumping, unless somebody reports it to us, it's going to be self-regulated, because we don't have the time to have an overhead person sit there and monitor that thing twenty-four seven, when people are in there dumping their loads.
I'm just thinking if you're going for the first of the year and there's any type of notification that we had to give them that we are.
I think, I know that we have one commercial hauler in town that dumps there, I don't believe Uribe does, I believe Belcon does. Uribe, I think, takes somewhere else, outside of the city.
Please send a letter out to all our burn key holders in December, we'll include that information on there, and notify, you know, like, hey, we need your key back, if you're one of those users that put, you know, lawn stuff out there.
Commercial.
Commercial.
Because we even have some mom and pops that just don't like the hassle of coming in, getting a key once or twice, and they just pay the full year worth, and they go in and out of there and stuff like that. So we'll at least drop something up for you, and then you can take consideration of that. Like I said, we'll also do our due diligence to inform our one commercial hauler, so they're not caught off guard, and they can continue to have the discussion as you probably bring a policy forward at a future date, okay?
That concludes item number three. Item number four, consideration of a task order number one to a master services agreement dated August first, twenty eleven, JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for additional GIS services in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, welcome council members and mayor. So we have, this is a additional task order to an existing master services agreement, different type of contract we have with a couple of our engineering services providers. This has been an ongoing project for several years now, it's highly successful, we're probably about seventy-five percent of the way through. Of course, what we're doing is creating a highly detailed GIS map, great geographical information system, and effectively, we're putting all the assets of city infrastructure into electronic map. We have a single map, and therefore, we don't have to create individual maps, and when we update one, the other maps go out of date and then require a stepwise update. And so, it's been, we've so far completed the electrical utility, the last summer, the stormwater utility, and this summer, the water utility. We plan to use this additional task order for the next fiscal year, and we anticipate next summer having our interns map out the sanitary sewer system. It's the most difficult, of course, the most hazardous, we don't really have sewer gas problem, it can be highly dangerous, but that'll require additional training and additional attention to that. So, you can see at the, you have a seven-page agreement in your packet, the first two pages are the test bar itself, followed by two exhibits, three-page exhibit A, and then finally, just over a page long is exhibit B, which kind of details the work of the interns. And so, we have utilized, if you see at the bottom of the page, the list of items and fee totaling one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Of that list, there are seven items, item four, utility inventory embedded internships. This year, for the first year, we'll have a concordia student available during the school year, he worked Josh Meyer, he worked all summer long, did an excellent job, and he does have the availability to continue on, so he'll do some minor one-person tasks throughout the, hopefully both semesters, and hopefully he'll be back again next summer and working with one or two additional colleagues to complete the wastewater system. So of this, total one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred, one hundred eleven thousand is for the interns over the fall, the third semester, and in particular summer, that's about sixty-two percent of the contract. They are billed out at seventy-five dollars an hour, they're roughly half of what it would cost us to have a land surveyor or a technician that works for a land surveyor perform this work, a professional. It does give the interns a lot of real world experience, many of them are in study of areas that this would benefit for their future careers, and provide some income for them, and essentially provides a great asset to the city, where we're able to identify for many of our desktops where these assets are, and we could see it long before we have to send a crew out to tackle whatever problem. So with that, I have asked for approval of this task order in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars to the JEO Consulting Group.
Just to be clear, the agenda has one hundred seventy-eight thousand, but it is one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred?
It is, I see that discrepancy now for the first time. It is specifically nine hundred dollars.
I don't know the extra nine hundred dollars, maybe Matt's not feeling it.
But of course, we're billed hourly based, we are billed hourly based on the work actually done, and so any unused hours would go unbilled. But we hope that this is the final task order, and then going forward after this, we essentially have a complete GIS system, cost will then be just a kind of a annual budgeted cost for maintaining the licensed subscriptions necessary for the access to the software, as an example, so.
Do we make our own updates then after that?
We currently make, we currently make updates, so there are several people, David Seastack, he's actually quite good at this, the actual interns themselves, they can themselves make in real-time updates to that. Brandon, has any crew adapted this? Not yet, but Jerry.
David beats us to it.
David does, David will do it for all the utilities, he does an excellent job. If he's not out locating on a ticket that he has, he fills his time actually finding errors and checking and updating, he keeps himself quite busy, he's quite active in this, and I think a lot of our success, he works with the interns each and every year, and so David will assist both Bob Myers' crew, as well as the water, wastewater crew, Brandon's crew, Jared and Brooke, and perhaps other staff members have capacity to do the edits themselves as well, they do quite a bit for the electric system. And of course, that's a little more unique and hard for those who are not part of our department to update those assets.
And then we're also working with Sarah, named Kira.
Sarah, ultimately, this will be right, her department, and she'll maintain those, these systems ongoing, and of course, it's like a never-ending thing, as soon as you stop, it becomes outdated, and so we'll have to budget annually, and as we grow as a city and as we modify assets through street projects and other things, water main extensions, of course, every year we'll have some cost, but we're well on our way, and it's gone quite well, in my opinion.
And the interns work for JEO, right?
They are JEO employees, yes. And so they're trained by JEO, they attend events that JEO hires, as most engineering firms do, interns that perform work for them, and they attend their functions, and they're provided training, PPE, personal protection equipment, JEO provides them a vehicle, the truck with flashing lights, and equipment, so it's, for the rate is seventy-five dollars, I think, it's quite a good deal for the city.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Those who entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second for approval, need for discussion. Sign down, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Strice, and Morgan, seven zero.
Thank you, Mike. Item five, items related to the twenty twenty four reverse osmosis improvements project. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. I believe, or the A group on this one was a change order for two thousand hundred seventy-five dollars for Comline car, that is for two thousand eight-inch and ten-inch valve that we use to isolate the third cartridge filter. It was actually noted by Gary Yoncheck, the water superintendent, that in the original design, the RO plant, the third skin, there wasn't an isolation mechanism for that third cartridge filter, so that covers this cost. So I ask for your approval on that, so we can.
So for item five A, any other questions or comments from the council, or entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second for approval, need for discussion. Sign down, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Strice, and Morgan, seven zero.
And item B?
Item B is another change order for the same project to Erickson Construction, who was our contractor on that, and that was to, they had to modify the legs on that third cartridge filter, and for a cost of four thousand nine hundred sixty-eight, and they, where the exit piping from that cartridge filter entered through the grading into the service trench on its way to the RO train, they had to cut the existing grading and they welded in that aluminum grating kind of a collar, and restabilized that grading, so when staff walks across it, it doesn't want to sag, or think you're going to fall down in the trench. That was an additional thirteen hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents, and so the change order for this, for those two modifications was six hundred, or six thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, so ask for another approval on that change order as well.
Move to approve.
Second, the motion in second for approval, need for discussion. Sign down, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Strice, and Morgan, seven zero.
Thank you. Item six, consideration of a membership agreement with the Seward County Chamber and Economic Partnership for fiscal year twenty-five. Welcome, Jonathan.
Hello, thank you mayor, thank you council for the opportunity to present a brief annual report and request for funding to you all. We do this annually, I think it's really important from an accountability standpoint that we're in front of you and review the formal agreements that we've had with the City of Seward for almost ten years now with the new partnership, so we're grateful for that. I want to introduce Rachel Summer, who is here on behalf of our board of directors, God bless her for sticking around for two hours extra, so she gets extra gold stars for that for our next board meeting, so thank you, Rachel. She'll introduce herself a little more, in a little bit, she represents Southeast Community College on our board of directors, and so you'll get to hear her perspective from the board here in just a little bit. I want to say thank you for the city council's past investments in our organization, and we're coming up on a decade of the partnership, it's been fun to see the positive impact of that over about a decade now. Also want to say not just for the investment, but also for your representative, council member Kayla, does an excellent job representing you on our board of directors, and so grateful for Megan's participation, she serves as our vice chair this year, and so, God willing and the creek don't rise, she'll be our chairperson next year, and so we're grateful for her participation and great representation of the City of Seward on our board. What I'd like to walk through briefly on your agenda is both membership agreement and funding agreements, as you may recall from past years, membership agreement basically shows what all our public sector partners are contributing, that's kind of the short agreement, the funding agreement's a little bit longer, so I'm going to briefly walk through that to show our compliance with that, but I have both the funding and the membership agreement from this last, from this current fiscal year, as we anticipate the next fiscal year for you. So briefly, the funding agreement that you have in front of you on the second page then is the membership agreement, and if you have any questions on either one of those, feel free to ask, but briefly, the funding agreement, signed from October one of twenty-four to September thirtieth of twenty-five, coming up here in a couple weeks. The city's annual investment, seventy-eight thousand one hundred eighty-six in our organization for your current fiscal year, is spent towards our operations, and according to Nebraska state statute, our public funds are segregated in a separate bank account, they're only used for the economic, purposes of economic development. We conduct an annual audit within sixty days of June thirtieth, every year to ensure compliance with the agreement, we gave proof of that audit, which was conducted on August twelfth, emailed to you a couple of weeks ago. Also, we had an additional independent financial review conducted at the beginning of twenty-twenty-five that we mailed you a copy of on July nineteenth. Ultimately, we'd ask the council to consider renewing your supportive economic development efforts in Seward County through entering into a new funding agreement and public membership agreement with our organization for your upcoming fiscal year. Want to briefly highlight then, on page three, shows some of our projects that we've been working on over the last year or so, both shows on the economic development side as well as community development efforts throughout the county, and I think you can see pretty clearly that Seward County continues to grow. And I'd like to point your attention to one quote in particular from Kellen Meyer, recently completed building his new Plum Creek Seed Services facility in the Seward Rail Campus, and we got to celebrate with him and his team during a ribbon cutting ceremony on August twentieth. I'll read that, his quote, "The SCCDP played a crucial role for Plum Creek Seed Services through the entire process of identifying a lot to the application of TIF funding. Jonathan attended many city meetings in efforts to make this a smooth process for all parties involved. We offer our sincere thanks to the SCCDP staff for their dedication and willingness to work with businesses that want to build and grow in Seward County." Wanted to share that because I think it does a nice job of articulating some of the ways that we help support businesses to grow in Seward County, and just to give a specific perspective from a local business. I want to give kudos to my other teammates that work hard on behalf of our organization, I get a lot of credit for things, and they do a lot of the hard work, and so just, we couldn't do the work we do without a team, so I want to give kudos to Donna Henderson, Joni Brechka, Colin Heim, Tiffany Schmidt, Heidi Blank, they're focused on supporting many of our community and economic development projects, and you get to hear about their work when we provide the quarterly written reports that go out to you about every ninety days. Just on a personal note, I'm on year, almost fourteen now of doing this work, almost ten with the new partnership, really feel it continues to be a gift to, you know, to be a part of creating the future of the place I call home, and so grateful for that partnership. Greg's stuck seeing me every single Monday morning, because we're working on projects constantly on behalf of the community and the county, and it's an honor to do that in partnership. And have Rachel stand up, share a little bit of perspective from the board of directors, and also connection to Southeast Community College, she's a great kind of white partner for us.
Thank you, Jonathan. So again, my name is Rachel Summer, I am a resident of Seward County, if you need address. It's the best address in Seward, it's one, two, three, four, East Seward Street, Seward, Nebraska. It's great, and people don't believe me when I give out that address. Um, I do work on the Southeast Community College Milford campus, I work in the Office of Financial Aid. And when I was asked to serve as a role on the board of directors, it was because I lived in Seward, I worked in Milford, and now my husband worked in Utica. So we kind of embody the whole of Seward County. So anyway, I prepared just a little bit of a statement here. Education has always been one of the pillars and a priority of Seward County. Because of this, the partnership between SCCDP and Southeast Community College Milford Campus is a very natural partnership. We have a similar mission, to support and enhance the communities we serve. As a community college, this has always been at the heart of our purpose. Collaborating with SCCDP allows us to synchronize our efforts toward goals that have been identified not only by the college, but by the communities and industries of Seward County as well. Simply stated, SCCDP strives to bring new businesses and jobs to the area, and the role of SE of Southeast is to train and provide the qualified workforce to support these employers. I couldn't help but notice during the, um, discussion about the nuclear power plants, this is an area, SEC does train nuclear power plant operators. So it just shares or, um, gives that example of how we are working with Seward County to provide those future needs, needs. SCC Community College is proud of its established and successful partnership with SCCDP. As the Milford Campus representative on the board of directors for almost four years, I have witnessed the deep commitment of our members that they have for the progress and continued success, not only of SCCDP, but for all of the businesses, cities, and residents of Seward County. The board of directors and I appreciate the council's support and continued investment in the SCCDP and our mission, and look forward to seeing the great things that we will accomplish. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Rachel. Uh, to quickly land the plane here, uh, again, thank you for the past investment from, uh, the Seward City Council. Uh, we can't do that work without your support. Um, last year, we asked for a six percent increase, this year we're not asking for an increase, so we're asking for the same amount. Uh, we're having budget challenges, um, for everyone involved, and so we're trying to be mindful of that. And so we are asking though for your ongoing, uh, financial support of our organization into your new, uh, new fiscal year coming up. And just to note, our four public sector partners account for a really important thirty percent of our total budget. With that said, uh, we're asking for the Seward City Council to consider supporting our organization for your upcoming fiscal year with a seventy-eight thousand one hundred eighty-six dollar investment. Thanks again for the past support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jonathan.